All right, we're live and in person. Chairman, the floor is yours. Looks like we have some shy folks, Joe.
I guess so.
Not shy, just technical difficulties, please stand by. Joan would remember that, most of the rest of you are too young. Shall I hold up the little sign of, you know, the lightning bolt going through the camera? So that everyone knows that we'll be right back if, once we fix our technical difficulties. Okay. All right. We on the air? On the air, you're live and recorded. Live and in person, okay. It's 6:32 PM, June 23rd, 2021. And this is the Village of Homer Planning Board, I'll call a meeting to order.
On a note for the record, this is not a regular meeting, this is a special meeting.
Okay, yes, this is a special meeting. That is just a, sorry, Doc, just it is a special meeting, but this will be the new timeframe for planning board meetings in the, moving forward. So we're moving them to the fourth Wednesday of the month.
But this is the third, right?
No, this is the fourth.
Is it?
Yep. 23rd. Fourth Wednesday. Okay. I see we have Ashley and Paul are here as board members, so that gives us a quorum. Our attorney Dante is here, and it looks like Mr. Clokey is here. And 5004 must be CEO Kevin McMahon. So, first item on the agenda for new business is the application from Coffee Mania for a site plan review. I don't I don't see anybody from Coffee Mania on.
Don, I'll try to call them for you, just in case. I called her today and left a message, I didn't hear back.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't want to hold up the meeting to any of the invite was sent. You called a couple of times, it's okay if they have questions afterwards, we can certainly answer them.
Don, I was in touch with Michelle earlier this afternoon, and she said she would be in the meeting.
Okay, well, then, let's, let's pass on to her application and move on to the one from William Clokey, since William Clokey is available now. And this site plan review, everybody should the members and everybody should have a copy of the application. William Clokey is intending to occupy an existing structure, adding towing business and an impound lot, and changing use of the diner space in the front to office. The building at the rear of the property is still currently being used as a repair shop. Mr. Clokey, if you would like to address the board and give a brief narrative of what you're doing, that would help.
Basically, I'm looking to run a repair facility and a towing towing operation out of there, which I tow for the 911 Center, Cortland County, and we are required at times to impound vehicles, like, you know, DWIs or, you know, vehicle wrecks, and store them for short periods of time.
Okay. Now, Mr. Clokey has submitted a, let me just see here. There's a short form, no? There's not, there, we did not do, it's an unlisted action, am I correct, Kevin? Unlisted action, okay. There are okay, there are Mr. Clokey has also submitted some drawings. One is not to scale, but it shows approximately what he's doing. And that one has a, at the top of the eight and a half eleven sheet says property line fence. At the left, it says, shows railroad. And he's sketched in a towing, an impound lot, a proposed fence, shop buildings, office, and customer parking at the south property line. Also, he has submitted via his, the real estate agent who's handling the, the sale, Pam Williams, a survey from 1974, I am sorry, 1964, showing a building which is no longer there at the south property line, that was a house, does not show the diner location, and it's sketched in the shop building and an impound yard. And beyond that, we have a resolution from number 21-20 from County Planning, Ohland County Planning Board. And there are seven recommend, or recommendations or contingencies for recommendation. The eighth one is compliance with SEACR. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Clokey? Paula or Ashley?
Don, I don't have any questions, because it's, it's the space that sits back. I, I don't see a problem, it's kind of what it used to be, so I have no questions.
Okay, Paula?
Same here. I really didn't have any questions either. And it is what, it seems like it's going to be used for the, the same thing.
Okay, at, at some point, there was a, a square footage for impound area, and I can't seem to locate that in in the application, but I know I saw it somewhere. Okay. If everybody any, would like to, anybody would like to make a motion regarding approval or denial, and we, do we have, we have to do a short form yet anyway, right? Joan?
Yes.
Let's do the short form. Would you please read the?
Is there any reason for you to have a public hearing at all or not?
I don't believe so, Kevin, this isn't a an allowed use, am I correct?
This, because it's industrial, any uses that happen there have to be reviewed by the planning board site plan review, so that's the reason for you guys meeting. However, I don't believe in if Dante is in the loop, he can verify that a public hearing is not required.
Yeah, I'm in the loop or in the meeting. So what you're doing is a site plan review that doesn't require a public hearing, I don't know.
Okay.
But there was a number of county recommendations too, did you see those, Don?
Yes, I have. There are seven plus the one for complying with SEACR.
Right, yeah, you, you can start with SEACR, I just wanted to draw your attention there, but it sounds like you got a plan, so.
Right, yeah, we, we'll go through the SEACR and then we'll, we can enumerate those. If the board wants to approve this application, we can enumerate those in the resolution to approve.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, this is the part two, the impact assessment of the short environmental assessment form. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No.
One more?
No.
Okay. Oh, no. Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land?
No.
No.
Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No. No.
Number four is the critical environmental area question.
No. It doesn't apply.
No.
Number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkways?
No.
No.
Number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No. No.
Number seven, will it impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
No.
Public or private wastewater treatment facilities?
No.
Number eight, will it impair, impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, etc.?
No.
Number nine, will it result in an adverse change to natural resources like wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna?
No.
No.
Number 10, will it result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Number 11, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No. No.
Okay, so that indicates a negative declaration, and you need a motion for that.
Yep, I'll make, I'll make a motion for the negative declaration.
That, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Paula?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Paula, you and I?
Yes, I was an aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, the the next item, the next thing is that in these recommendations, we don't have anything from the applicant showing what kind of fencing he will be using to screen the impound yard. And that really needs to be determined. It, it may not have to be determined tonight, but it would have to pass muster with what our our requirements are in the village. Kevin, do you have any, any specifications that you know of for screening?
I don't think because it's a commercial use, I don't have the fencing regulations in front of me. Typically, I've found in other municipalities that, to be somewhat of a private style of fencing, if it's chain link woven or stockade style. But beyond that, I, I don't know that we have anything specific beyond just having the fencing there, Dante, I'll let you pitch in.
The county's recommendation was sort of left a little bit to the discretion of the planning board. The language there is just adequate screening. So I think you and, and the rest of the planning board should try to figure out a, a solution that provides that screening, well, we don't have minimum fencing requirements, but there are some, you know, height, height, height requirements and setback requirements for fencing that have to be adhered to under our local code. But what constitutes adequate is going to kind of be a, a question for, for the board, you and the board to, to consider.
Okay, well, I'm going to suggest a six-foot fence.
High.
Six foot high, yes. And could be either a stockade type fence, a solid wood fence, or it could be a chain link fence with some kind of a fabric interwoven so that the vehicles are not visible from the road. Anybody have, Mr. Clokey, you have any comment on that? Is that a?
Um, if you look at the, if you look at the drawing that I, the site plan review that I drew up, the building, the shop is actually going to block the vehicles from seeing from Route 11, and on the north end of the property line, there is already a wooden fence. As far as the south end of the property, there is a wooden fence that has kind of fallen down that we would end up reconstruct, you know, just, just rebuilding onto it, fixing it is what I should say.
Well, you have a, on the drawing you submitted, it shows a proposed fence running from the building south to the property line.
Yes, because when I spoke with Dan and Kevin in the beginning, they said something about maybe having to put a fence up, maybe making the property lockable, you know what I'm saying? But I've since spoke with Kevin about it, and it doesn't necessarily need to be lockable. You'd be, you know, due to, like, the 911 Center does not require you to have a locking yard, if it needs to be put inside and locked up, that's what we do.
Okay. It still really leaves me a little bit perplexed with county planning's.
Will, I have a quick question, so the cars would be behind the building, so it's not like you'd see them from the road?
Yes, they, they would be behind, the, the impound lot is proposed to be behind the shop, and also, like I said, on the north end of the property, in between the factory and my property is a wooden fence approximately six foot high that you cannot see through at all, that goes all the way to the back of the property, and then on the backside of the property is the railroad tracks.
Okay.
So you, the only way to actually have access to the impound lot is to go to the left or the south end of the shop and drive around back. That's why I proposed a fence there, if, if it needed to be lockable, but it does, it isn't required to be lockable.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clokey, let me suggest this. In the drawing you submitted, you have a proposed fence. Let us delete that proposed fence. And then you, you're towing an impound lot where you've penciled, you've written it in, extends beyond the building. So if we were to say the towing and impound lot, and then add beneath that fully behind shop building. How's that sound?
Oh, that sounds good with me, that's, that's kind of what I was planning, I knew when I drew it out, I drew it a little long, but yeah, I was planning to keep all the vehicles behind the shop.
Don, do you want to repeat that for me, please?
Delete the proposed fence on his sketch that he submitted.
Yeah, I got that.
And then it says towing an impound lot. And I would add fully behind shop building.
Fully?
Yeah, fully, totally.
Okay.
Completely.
Okay. May I also remind you that the planning board, on numerous occasions in the past, you have incorporated the county's recommendations in your final if you approve it, you know, incorporating recommendations, number what through what?
Right, yeah, we, we can get to that, Joan, when we get down to the final. I just want to go through these, these various comments here.
Has the applicant seen this report at all?
He, I, yes, I believe, William, you've got a copy of this, right?
Yes, I have a copy of the, of county plannings, yep.
Right, okay.
I want to note that for the record.
Okay. Then item number two, no dismantling or repair of vehicles outside of the existing auto repair shop. That's pretty self-explanatory. Now, the maximum number of vehicles impounded at any one time should be established. So what is the maximum number that you can fit in that space?
When, when we, when we went over there and measured it, I, I, I figured out 10 cars.
Okay. So we can footnote that for number three, 10 cars. All right. Number four is that drip pans be placed under vehicles that enter the storage yard to collect any dripping fluids, that's pretty self-explanatory. And recommendation that the impound storage area be paved to allow spills to be more visible and to provide an impervious surface under the site. If we're going to waive this, we need four votes, and we don't have four votes tonight. Am I correct? Dante?
Yeah, the, the people who aren't in attendance are automatically considered no votes, so even if all three voted, you would not have a super majority.
Okay, so William, can you, are you willing to pave that area?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And then, that, item five is no problem, I, I just want to be sure that if, if you were going to have a problem with it, we would, we, we've got a problem on approving it. Number six, the applicant keep absorbent material on site to reduce the impact of spills. You already know about that, and you do that. And the applicant submits an annual report to the village regarding the number of vehicles that are stored on the site and the amount of time each vehicle is stored. There is no, to my knowledge, there is no form for doing that at this time. And I'm not sure who would develop that form. Dan, can you weigh in on this for us?
We could easily do that, that's no problem.
Okay. And then compliance with SEACR requirements. So given all of those stipulations, recommendations, I'll entertain a motion from the floor on this application.
This is Paula, I, I, I motioned to approve the application.
Okay.
I'll second that, Don.
Now, that's with the, including the 10 recommendations from Resolution 21-20.
Seven recommendations, right, you've already done number eight.
Right, with the seven recommendations, including the 10-car limit and fencing not required as long as all the vehicles are stored behind the building. And a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. The application.
Ashley that made that, I was busy right.
Ashley made the motion, Paula second.
Okay, I got it.
The motion is, motion carried, the application is approved. And there was some comments, Mr. Clokey, are you, any signage, just a reminder, any signage that you want, you need to, to get with Kevin McMahon and get approval for any signage that you put up in accordance with the requirements of the local zoning law.
And Don, do you have that form, the SEACR form, did you check the boxes and?
No, but they were all no, I've got one, but I don't know where it is right at this time, I, I printed off a bunch of extras, but I there's someplace on my desk.
Okay, they were all no anyway.
Right, so I'll, I'll take care of getting that signed in, into the office tomorrow.
Thank you.
Don, one more item?
Yes, sir.
Part of your site plan review had to do with the change of use of the diner into an office building.
Okay. But there was no comment from county planning about that, so we can we can, and as far as I'm concerned, the application was asking to do that, and I don't think we have a problem with, with that being part of the approval, Dante, are we, do we need to include that?
I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the motion was to approve the application as incorporating the changes required by the county.
Right.
To approve the site plan, yes.
Yes. Okay, so Mr. Clokey, you are in a go position apparently here. As I said, keep in touch with the CEO as far as any, any changes you make. Anything, any, any work done on the buildings. Require building permits. A lot of place, a lot of towns may not require that, but the Village of Homer does require building permits for almost everything.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, thank you very much, guys.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the application from Michelle Brooks, Coffee Mania for a site plan review of property at 139 Northwest Street. You have the application in front of you. And we have eight comments plus the SEACR comment from county planning. And so I'll let the Brooks resp, or make their presentation, you, they did provide a typewritten narrative, but you're welcome to explain or anything that you feel is necessary. You're muted right now.
Hi.
Hi, sorry, I'm not good at Zoom.
Yeah. Neither are we.
Thank you for having us this evening. We're really excited to finally get moving on this project. It's been a long time in the making. And so we are definitely really looking forward to to what we have going on. I, I, I don't know, I, I'm super happy to answer any and all of your questions and respond to all of the items that the county recommended. And yeah, we're excited to get going.
Okay, well, Ashley or Paula, do you have any questions for the Brooks?
Don, I don't, I'm excited that they're doing this.
Thanks, Ashley. You're welcome.
I have no question either, it was, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Let's let's take a look at the, the recommendations from county planning. Have you seen these, Michelle?
Yes, I, I contacted Kevin, well, you know, we read about it in the newspaper, of course, and so then I contacted Kevin and asked him if it was possible to see what those notes were exactly, and he was kind enough to forward them to me this evening. And he was kind enough to forward them to me this evening, and so, yes, I have seen them.
Okay, uh, the, the first one is pretty much straightforward, that you would have to get approval of driveway entrances.
Yeah, we've been in contact with, um, uh, Keith Van Gorder already. We have an established relationship there, and he's provided me with all of the information and, you know, that I will need to submit to the Department of Transportation. Um, yeah.
Okay, item number two is, uh, provide the village with data, the maximum number of vehicles that queue in the drive-through lanes at the other two locations.
Yeah, that one's, that one's a little bit, uh, that's, that's the most, um, you know, challenging one on the list as far as we're concerned because it's, that's, that's hard to quantify. Um, so I approached that one from a, from a standpoint of, um, how many? One, multi-pronged, one is how many customers per day are we serving at our other two locations? Um, two, how many customers per day are we serving in Homer? Uh, three, what is the traffic count that travels past, uh, each one of those respective locations per day? So, um, what we found is that in Homer, at, at the proposed site location, there is half of the traffic per day than there is on Groton Avenue and on, um, Port Watson Street. Um, we serve approximately twenty-five percent of the customer count that we do at our other two locations currently at Origins. Um, so we anticipate that even at double what our current customer count is at Origins, the speed at which our baristas will be able to handle that will be, um, quite sufficient. Uh, I contacted Keith Van Gorder months ago, actually, it was probably over a year ago at this point, when we were first looking at, um, this project. And I asked him what the state's requirement was for queue for vehicles in a drive-through. And he, his answer was ten, so that's five on each side, which, um, you know, we, that's what we shot for, for meeting that requirement with the state, um, was to have ten, uh, queue spots for customers. Um, so to the best of my knowledge, you know, that feels like we've met that. But I guess I would ask you guys, is there anything else that you would like to know, uh, from us about that?
Ashley?
I have no questions. I know how the other, their other two run, and you're in line for two seconds, so I think the cars will be moving pretty quickly through there.
So, the, um, Port Watson, I mean, to, I guess, to directly answer the question, the Port, Port Watson store has the ability on property to queue six total, three on the front, three on the back. Um, the Groton Avenue location, I mean, it's virtually infinite, the number that we could queue up there. And, I mean, if you watch social media, sure, at times you've seen it pile up, you know, when we were closing down for COVID. I mean, I think that that stands in the category of its own. Um, but with, so with this location, we'll be able to queue up five on each side, which is almost double what Port Watson Street is, uh, on property without going into the street. Ten total.
Hmm. Well, I, I, I've seen at times the Groton Avenue has had ten or twelve. Um, and quite frankly, that would not be acceptable on two eighty-one, to have five in line and, and seven more out on the shoulder of the road. Uh, and I, and I think you can understand.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, for sure.
Your customers are, uh, again, customers leaving, if they're, if they're leaving and heading south, they're golden. If they're heading north, there's, there's going to be some real issues crossing the southbound lane of traffic to get into the northbound lane. That's not my problem, that's your problem. And along with the state, but, you know, I, uh, when we ran into this, uh, back when Speedway, before Speedway was, uh, the Sunoco, they, state at one point wanted no left turn onto Route ninety from the gas station. Which meant that all the traffic had to go towards Summer Hill if they went out on Route ninety. Or if they were going northbound, they had to cross the main, the southbound lane of traffic. And I forget who the supervisor was in, at the time in Syracuse. Uh, but we said to her, that doesn't make sense. If you've got northbound traffic, they should be able to get out, get to the light and make a left turn at the light. And she saw the wisdom of our ways, I guess. So, uh, you are not in a position where you can do anything about that, uh, but I guess I would, it, it may come to a point where you're going to have to politely direct people to not turn left so that you can accuse moving. Not, not turn north on two eighty-one. Uh, I hope, I hope you have a lot of business, believe me.
Well, thank you, I, I do appreciate that. Um, I'm trying to make my computer work and my phone at the same time, it's always a challenge. I, I do feel like, uh, we are situated far enough. I, I think the state will, uh, be pleased with the distance that we are from the intersection. I think that that is helpful, um, you know, certainly to the current situation that we cause on the corner at Origins. Um, this will be far more, um, as far as traffic and safety goes, I think it's going to be far better.
Okay.
Michelle, can I just ask you, um, how many spaces, how many parking spaces are there at Origins right now?
Um.
About ten or, I think, uh, about twelve that are actually marked out, and there are some that are, uh, not marked but are used occasionally.
So, that, I just, just for the re- I mean, already people, I mean, I'm going in and out of there, everyone, you know, and there's twelve spaces. And so, I, I mean, I think that, that ten is very reasonable.
Yeah, we'll be able to serve people a lot faster because we're not going to have sandwiches. So, um, the, the wait time for people waiting to receive their, um, order will be diminished significantly um, because of the fact that the, the sandwiches will no longer be part of our menu there. So, um, we have, we have a speed record at, um, at the drive-throughs of, we can do about a, a car every thirty seconds. So, um, I mean, that comes with experienced baristas and knowing what people drink and, um, and that type of thing. So, we do keep people moving rather quickly. Um, the other thing that I like about this is, um, that as people are exiting, there is room for, you know, um, three people on one side and probably six or eight cars on the other side for if there's, uh, difficulty with turning or a pause for people to turn. Um, you know, out of, of the site. Um, I think it would allow time, you know, for traffic to sort of clear up.
Oh, right, on the out.
Right. Turning north.
I see, yeah, right, you got, that's, if you're on the east side of the building, there are two or three places for cars to, to back up.
Correct.
The, the one being served in the road, and there's probably five or six going the other way if you're on the west side of the building coming out.
Yes.
Okay, um, the, the number th- three is the applicant rec- the contingent on applicant submitted or revised site plan for proposed drive-through, moving the building farther back to provide, and on the property, to provide enough area to queue at a minimum, the maximum number of vehicles that queue in the drive-through lanes at the other two locations. Now, you don't re- from what you're telling us, you don't have to, because you've got more than that at the other two, than you've got more space than you have the other two locations.
Well, certainly than at Port Watson Street. I mean, it, you know, Groton Avenue is kind of a, an unfair comparison because we're in the middle of a, 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 an enormous parking lot, you know?
Right, the, the, and I'm going to have to talk with, or discuss this with, uh, the attorney, because if, for us to approve it, we have to, we're going to have to clarify the, the, uh, language in that particular one. But let's skip to number four, you've got applicant provide adequate screening around the dumpster area. That is tradition.
I want to, uh, move on for a second. Um, it, it, it doesn't, if you read the, the, the paragraph carefully, it doesn't say you have to provide, um, you know, infinite parking or infinite, uh, 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 area to queue, but more so, uh, it provides the maximum number of vehicles that do, do queue, so.
Right, why, I, I agree with you there, Dante, I, I, it's just we need to, to find a way to negate that moving and saying that the, they have provided evidence that it will, that the, what they have shown is more than adequate for queuing.
Ri- right, so you kind of have to find the peak numbers, and I think, uh, the applicant was talking about collecting data, so I think they do probably have data of sort of, I don't know when their peak times are, I assume probably in the morning is eight-ish is probably their peak times, if I had to guess. So if she has data on, you know, X number of cars, uh, queue up in certain locations, uh, that, that's more of the data you want than not necessarily the capacity, what the, uh, actual numbers are during the, the, the peak time.
Also, okay to say the data was provided by the applicant?
Yeah, the, the, the applicant has provided data showing that the, the move, moving the building back would not be required.
Okay.
Okay, providing adequate screening around the dumpster area, uh, that usually consists of either, uh, as you heard with Mr. Clukey, either a solid board fence or a, a wire mesh with, uh, screening in it. Obtaining a food service establishment permit, that's, that goes without, that's, doesn't have to be anything that we get involved with, because you got to do that anyway. Uh, number six, you provide, obtain approval of the water connections, and you're going to have to have, be hooked up to the village water and sewer. Um, outside lighting, I don't think was shown on the site plan.
Okay.
Uh, but it has to be, meet the requirements, directed downward, no light emanating out of your neighboring properties. Large, uh, greater than a foot candle. And, uh, you're not exceeding one acre of land and, and disturbing property, from what I read here, I think you're what? Point five, something like. In compliance with secret, so we've, we've covered all of that. We can go to, uh, do the short form, it's unlisted, I believe it's Unlisted Action. Form, environmental, if Joan will read the questions.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, part two, the impact assessment. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No.
Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensive use of land?
No.
Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No.
Number four, the critical environmental area again. So that's no. Number five, will the proposed action result in the adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure, infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkways?
No.
No.
Number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy?
No.
No.
Number seven, will it impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
No.
Public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
No.
Number eight, will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
Number nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality or snail darters?
No.
No.
Number, didn't you even notice that?
Snail darters, yeah, I heard that.
Yeah. Number ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Number eleven, will the action recreate a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No.
Okay, so you need a motion for a negative declaration.
I'll motion for, uh, negative declaration, this is Paula.
And I'll second that.
Motion for a negative declaration is made and seconded, all in favor? Aye? Ananamous. Okay, now, um, we we did not discuss, and it really is not that crucial to us, but do you have, uh, building plans or anything for what that building would look like?
Um, we s- we, we've begun, for sure. Uh, we don't have, did I, did I submit any?
No.
Visuals?
No.
I'm not, I'm not smart enough or technologically savvy enough to put them on screen. Um, we do have them, um, they, they're still in the beginning phases. I wanted to get, uh, everything right with you guys, the county and the, uh, Department of Transportation before we went too much further. I have an architect, um, who's, who we worked with, um, and he's, he's, yes, so we're working on it, it's going to be fun, it's going to be, we're going to do some a nod to Port Watson Street with the roof line being in, uh, we're sort of tossing around a couple of different shapes, either a W or an M shape. Um, we want to use some nice materials, uh, some stonework, um, and some, um, like metal cladding on the outside. Yeah, we've, we've got some, we've got some fun ideas, um, planned for the, for the space, for sure.
Okay.
But we'll submit all that, right? We need to submit all that for our building permit anyway.
Yes, you will for a building permit, and you, you also, any signage, you'll have to be, you know, connecting with Kevin. What's allowed?
Yep.
And what's required, uh. All right, um, we need a motion then, if you, if the board desires to approve this. Need a motion approving the site plan for, uh, the Coffee Mania building. Incorporating the conditions in county planning's resolution number twenty-one dash eighteen.
I will motion, this is Paula, but that was a lot, I'm trying to remember what you just said. To approve the site plan with the conditions. to approve the site plan with the conditions of the county, um,
Planning Board.
Planning Board.
Resolution.
Resolutions 21, whatever, what was that?
21-18.
I've got it all, Paula.
Thank you.
And I will second that. It's Ashley.
Well, there's only the two of you, so it's got to be you, Ashley. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Um, just to clarify, um, for, are, are you, are you looking for us to, um, push the building back?
No.
No.
No, no.
Okay.
Dante and I have discussed, had that discussion and because you, the information Joan, I believe, has it, that you provided information that, uh, the, 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 uh, the number of cars in queue at the other places is less than what you have, would have in queue here. So you won't be exceeding what they did, what they, what they do. So you won't require, uh, moving the building back.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate all of your service to our community.
Hey, thank you.
Have a great night.
Good night. Joan, do we have? We don't, we don't have any minutes to approve this tonight.
No, they're still in the queue.
They're in the queue?
Yes.
U R S T? Okay, uh.
Don, I've got a, um, something quick to say. A comprehensive plan, um, as the board to present to the village, um, to, uh, so we don't have the big box stores coming in. This is not for anything that we're doing tonight, but I was just curious if we could maybe discuss that at a later date?
Yeah, uh,
To update it?
Yeah, there's, uh, the comprehensive plan is about, hmm, 10 or 11 years old, I believe. Uh, there was discussion at last night's village board meeting for, and I'm, I don't have the exact information, but they were talking about, uh, grant money that they may be able to get, that could be used for updating the comprehensive plan. It's the comprehensive plan is an expensive proposition, as is the zoning law. And, uh, just to, to get off on a tangent a little bit here, uh, the village has hired a consultant a couple of years ago, I believe, now have, and they have done the, the basic groundwork on updating the zoning law. But, um, it needs to be reviewed by various people. It's, it's too much for any one small group to review. And Pat Clune has been working, trying to get people to meet and, uh, accept reviewing, accept the job of reviewing certain portions of that. And, uh, I think that obviously the planning board should be involved in some point. And it's just that Pat and the rest of the board seem to have a little bit more on their plate than, uh, than they can handle easily right now. But, uh, I'm sure that in the not too distant future, we will be asked to look at the zoning law changes. And, uh, we may be able to incorporate stuff in the zoning law without changing the comprehensive plan. That's, that's a long story, a long way to get to your answer, an answer for you.
No, thank you. I, I just think we need to, uh, make sure that the big box people aren't coming into our little village, so.
Well.
You know how I feel about that.
I know, they may be here anyway. We, we'll see what happens, but, uh, I think that, that covers all of our, um, agenda for tonight. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn unless anybody has something else they want to say.
No, I'm motion, Paula.
Paula moves to adjourn. Ashley, second?
I will second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.